Any here? One second.
I was just gonna say.
You know what really stinks if you wait till the end of the day, every day, and you're like, oh, this is really sucking now, because I shouldn't have done that at like 2:28 today. This thing was happening, but I thought I'd get something better.
Well, glad we were the highlight of your day. Are you good? Everyone, that's Malia. Say hi to Malia.
Hi.
This is everyone. Rory is on vacation. And Monica's on vacation, too.
You know, sometimes I get a Michaela in there, but other than that, we're good.
So yeah, Malia is being Rory and Monica. If all goes well, we can eliminate some positions. So, wait a minute, you were in the Bronx Deli today.
Yeah.
You want to know how I know? Your shoes.
Oh, really?
Yep.
What?
As crazy as it sounds, because I was sitting there, I was looking down on my phone, and you walked by, and this shoe like has a little bit like of a bigger heel, and I'm like, wow, that's different, and it's just one of those stupid things that just sticks in your head when you're sitting there. I'm like, I looked at the shoes, and I'm like, wait a minute now.
I'm thinking, oh.
Yeah, so here we go, small world. Okay, now that I've promptly made a fool of myself, let's all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Lee, hopefully the recording wasn't on for any of that.
Yeah, not a girl. Yeah, Rory will be back Monday, thank God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. And we'll move on to item number three, public comment. Is there any public comments? Is there any public comments? Hearing no public comment, we'll move on to item number four, approved minutes from the August 6, 2019, regular meeting. Have motion to do so. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Bob. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0-1, and please note Trish's abstention. Item number five, first electors' report. We received our rating back from Standard and Poor's. I just wanted to go through that quickly. Last time we received a rating was in December of 2017, so it had been roughly 18 months. Over the last year, S&amp;P has been taking a long, hard look at a lot of the credits in Connecticut. A lot of Connecticut communities have been put on watch lists, a good number have actually been downgraded. Actually, several in our area have been downgraded over the last six months or so. But S&amp;P reaffirmed our AA rating and gave us a stable outlook, which is extremely positive in Connecticut these days. They gave, you know, some indications as to why they wanted to continue with that rating. They mentioned our economy being stable, and they're happy to see that a lot of our major taxpayers and employers are making reinvestments. They specifically mentioned Thule, Basement Systems, MPI, and Emery Winslow Scale, sorry, I lost my train of thought there. They also rate our management as strong. They ranked our budgetary performance as strong, our budgetary flexibility as strong. They noted our operating, essentially our fund balance at 11.6% going into our closing fiscal year 2018 with a $200,000 potential surplus in fiscal year 19, the year that just closed. They mentioned our very strong liquidity. They're excited to see that we have the flexibility. And they also highlighted our very strong debt-to-contingent liability profile, which is the reason we've been able to go out to the market so successfully over the last several years. They also gave us a very strong institutional framework score for Connecticut. They're very pleased with how we conduct our business. They took note of the transfers that we made during the last year to move money out of fund balance into the debt service and the interest service fund to help shield us from potential cuts from the state of Connecticut, because state of Connecticut was basing the cuts simply on fund balance, so they're happy we took the initiative to make those transfers. The upside scenario, over time, we could raise the rating if economic indicators were to improve to levels we consider comparable with higher-rated peers, coupled with strong budgetary flexibility through positive financial operations and improved debt. The reason that's important is we have done everything that we can from the town's perspective to get us the highest possible rating. The only thing that's holding us back now are the economic indicators, which quite honestly, we have no control over. That's median household income and some of those other things. So, you know, we're in the same conversation as a lot of the other stronger, you know, Fairfield County towns when it comes to the strength of the towns' finances. The thing that pushes them over the top, obviously, is the, just the status and the earnings of their residents and things, which is something that we will never, ever compete with. But I think we can certainly be very pleased with the AA+. You know, on the flip side, the downside scenario, although unlikely, we could lower the rating if budgetary performance were to deteriorate, leading to significant reserve drawdown. So, that's code for fund balance. They need to make sure, we need to make sure that we maintain an appropriate level in our fund balance. I know the Strategic Planning Committee, Stephon sits on that, and Trish helps out still as well. You know, there's levels in there that if we reduce our fund balance to certain levels, we need to make sure we're replacing that. So again, that's something that this board needs to take into consideration, and for the youngsters on the board in the years to come, it's something that they need to take account of. So I'm looking at this side when I'm talking about the youngsters, not this side. So, little extra age to the left than there is to the right. So, so that's the first electors' report. If anyone wants the actual report itself, we can certainly get that to you. It's not a, not a problem. We got this in on Friday. So that was, that was a good thing, so. All right, so with that, we'll close the first electors' report. We're gonna go to item number six, appointments. We're doing this a little bit differently, and I'll explain that in a few minutes. But, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointments dated August 20th, 2019, as presented. Motion by Stephon, second by Rob. Is there any discussion?
What is this roof replacement and solar panel installation?
We will discuss that in item number eight. It'll make more sense then.
I have a question. Should we not have to establish this committee before appointing people to it?
No, we have to establish the committee before we can pass the resolution. That's why we were out of work. No, I shouldn't say out of work. That's why we're doing the appointments earlier in the agenda than normal, because the resolution will pass, which we'll talk about in item number eight, specifically references the Roof Replacement and Solar Panel Installation Committee.
Okay.
In a nutshell, this is part of the JCI project. We're putting, well, we'll just do it now. We're putting solar panels on the roofs, and we're gonna get reimbursement from the state of Connecticut.
Okay.
There needs to be a...
I'm good with that. I just don't understand the order.
The committee has to come first. That's just the way that we were told to do it.
Okay, but appointing people to a committee that doesn't yet exist, it doesn't seem possible.
It'll exist as soon as you say yes. That creates it.
Okay, so we, we have the ability to establish committees just by appointing people to them without giving them any sort of charge or anything?
Well, the charge will come with the resolution. This is good? We're all good? I mean, would you guys feel more comfortable if we did it all at the same time? We did the resolution and appointed the committee?
I think so. Yeah, I don't have...
I'm fine with that.
Knowing what little I know about it, I have no issue with, you know, the people that would be going on the committee or whatever, but I would still like to, as a practice, know what the committee is before we start appointing people to it.
Not a problem. Like I said, well, that's why I noted we're doing things a little bit differently. That's fine.
Yeah, if we just swapped six and eight, it would, it'd make my life a lot easier.
Okay.
It'd make me feel better.
Yep. Okay, so the motions were made by, were any motions made?
I made a motion.
All right, so Stephon and Rob will withdraw their motions. I'll draw my motion. Okay, and then I'm gonna make a motion to go out of order to item number eight. So I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Motion by Stephon, second by Bob. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Item number eight, discussion, take possible action regarding DAS grant application resolution for roof replacement and solar installation. All right, so this is a grant application that we have in with the Department of Administrative Services, which will provide us reimbursement because the work is being done to the schools. So we'll receive, just like as if we were building new schools, we receive up to 65 cents on the dollar. So this is all built into the model, so I'll read the resolutions. Resolve that the Board of Selectmen authorizes the Town of Seymour Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the roof replacement and solar panel installation at the Bungay Elementary School and Seymour High School, as well as the solar panel installation at the Seymour Middle School. Resolve that the Roof Replacement and Solar Panel Installation Committee is hereby established as the Building Committee with regard to the roof replacement and solar panel installation at the Bungay Elementary School and the Seymour High School, as well as the solar panel installation at the Seymour Middle School. And resolve that the Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the roof replacement and solar panel installation at the Bungay Elementary School and Seymour High School, as well as the solar panel installation at the Seymour Middle School. So can I have a motion to approve as presented?
Okay.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Bob, under discussion?
This is what we talked about at our last meeting.
Correct.
Got it.
This is part of the Johnson Controls Project. Yep. And because we're making this application with DAS, we need to have a specific committee that's charged with it?
Let's appoint some people.
So that's where we're going to appoint. Said people, and who we're recommending as the committee is Mike Marseneck, who's the Chair of our Building Committee, Jim Baldwin, who's our Building Inspector, and Tim Connor's our Facilities Director.
That makes sense.
Yep, so they're all Seymour residents, so we are...
Stephon, there's no problem with the who, it's just that with the order.
Yeah, the order, which is not a problem at all. All right, so we have a motion. No other questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. So we'll go back into order, and we'll return to item number six. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointments dated August 20th, 2019, as presented. Motion by Rob, second by Anne Marie, under discussion? All good? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Lee, did you get all that? I told you it'd be easy. All right, item number seven, discussion, take possible action regarding roads. So we had our presentation last meeting from Brian. We had the opportunity to kind of digest, you know, the conversations. I know I've talked to some of you just about some different things over the last two weeks. So in conversation with bond counsel, what the question is going to reference is the road report, or what the decisions are gonna be based on the road report. Bless you. So we, if it is in the road report, then we would be able to pick and choose those roads. So tonight, we don't necessarily have to, and let's just say, have things above the red line that actually make the $5 million. If you are comfortable with all the roads that are on there, and you want to leave it to Brian to make the final decisions based on how the bids come back, what work needs to be done to kind of give Brian the ability to have some flexibility, then what we would do is we would approve the entire 46-road package, with the understanding that we would only do about $500, or excuse me, about $5 million worth of roadwork out of that $10.7 million. So with that being said, what comments does anyone have?
I agree with that being, I don't think should go. I think I like, he's the one who's been going over it. I took some driving and went around, you know. Ideally, we're putting ourselves in a program where all of the roads are going to get attention in time. So, I mean, this is, his wheelhouse is seeing what is actually most beneficial in what in what areas. So I support the idea of approving the package, and if things shift, something might happen where he goes, hey, we rejected this place now, because this is gonna be the most cost-effective thing. I want him to have that flexibility, because we know our aim is all of that direction.
Okay. Stephon, you were pushing your button. You have...
Yeah, since this probably, this could possibly be the last time I get to weigh in on this, I would like to, once again, emphasize that I think Clinton Road should be a priority. I think it's time, so I just want that on the record.
Okay. Actually, I have that in my notes, with your name right next to it.
This is the last time we have it.
Forever memorialized, even when you're no longer with us. Anne Marie? Oh, I don't, somebody pushed it on.
I did. I agree. I think we should leave it up to Brian. I would say all those roads, I'm just leaving it up to Brian's discretionary, so what needs to be done, but I agree with all sorts of stuff on Clinton Road that just needs to be taken care of.
Okay. Robert, try? No? Okay. So then what'll happen is, this will go back to Brian, where it says 2019-plus, that'll actually change to 2020 and plus, because this work will all be done in the next calendar year. We will remove the yellow highlighting for item number 17 and 18. Those will remain in as placeholders in case they are needed, but assuming that work is not needed, they'll just be crossed off, and that $400,000 would become available. And the red bar between '24 and '25 will come out, and it'll just be listed as 46 straight actions. Okay, with that, then, I'll entertain a motion to approve Figure 1, Recommended Roadway Replacement and Drainage Improvement Schedule dated 8/6/2019, to be included in the 2019-2020 Road Report. Motion by Bob, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Oh, and just under discussion, because I know Bob brought this up, and we talked a little bit about it separately from this, we're gonna kind of work on the grading schedule. I know we had talked a little bit about that. I don't want to confuse the bonding aspect of this and the work that needs to be done, but for December, when Brian comes in and kind of re-presents the plan, at that point, I think we should get into a topic, or a discussion, I should say, about the actual grading and how that comes in.
The grade criteria, not the grading of the roads.
Right. Yep. So then we can rank it out, and maybe, you know, Bob made the point, from now on, maybe we're just doing all the Ds, all the Cs, it kind of takes, you know, some of the work out of it, so. Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Okay, item number nine. All right, so where we are now is we're gonna go through each of the bond questions. These have been approved by bond counsel, so we need to do two things with each question. Number one is we need to approve the resolution, and then we need to approve the resolution to call special town meeting and referendum vote. Unfortunately, I have to read all of this into the record. So while this should be three simple votes for us, it may take a few minutes, so everybody get comfortable. So item number nine, resolution recommending an appropriation and bond authorization of $5 million for the reconstruction repair of various town roads and roadside elements. So, resolve that the Board of Selectmen recommends that the Town of Seymour appropriate $5 million for the reconstruction and repair of various town roads and roadside elements, including associated drainage facilities. The appropriation may be expended for site improvements, design, engineering, construction, reconstruction, repair, excavation, inspection, evaluation, and surveying costs, equipment, materials, professional fees, and for administrative financing and bond issuance costs, interest expense for temporary borrowing, and other costs related to the project. The appropriation shall include any federal, state, or other in-grant aid received for the projects. The Board of Selectmen may reduce the scope of the projects if funds are insufficient to complete the entire projects, and the entire appropriation may be spent on the reduced projects. The Board of Selectmen may, by resolution, transfer funds among the project, so long as the total appropriation and bond authorization is not increased. Further resolve that the Board of Selectmen recommends that the town finance the projects by issuing the town's bonds, notes, temporary notes, or other obligations in an amount not to exceed $5 million, or so much thereof as may be necessary after deducting grants to be received for the project.
I would note to the record that we have full question of the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Leclerc. I missed the line? Which line did I miss?
It's A, it's more than A, it's still B.
Oh, okay.
That's fine, as long as you got it in there.
Yes, we'll make sure that is included. Okay. And this resolution will also be forwarded on to the Board of Finance on Tuesday, next Tuesday, for their approval. All right, so can I have a motion to, oh, we already did that. No, we did not. A motion to approve the resolution as presented. Motion by Trish, second by Bob. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Item number 10, resolution to call special town meeting and referendum vote. Whereas the Board of Selectmen has recommended that the Town of Seymour appropriate $5 million for the reconstruction and repair of various town roads and roadside elements, including associated drainage facilities, and that the town finance said appropriation by issuing the town's bonds, notes, temporary notes, or other obligations in an amount not to exceed $5 million. And whereas, if the above recommendation is approved by the Board of Finance, a special town meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 15, 2019, at 6:30 PM to consider the resolution. Be it resolved, yet the attached detailed appropriation and bonding resolution for said projects is hereby approved and shall be submitted to a special town meeting to be held on Tuesday, October 15, 2019, in accordance with the attached warning of special town meeting. Further resolve that pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 7-7 as amended and the Town Charter, the Board of Selectmen hereby submits the resolution to a vote upon the voting tabulators or the ballot on Tuesday, November 5, 2019, between the hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM by town electors and qualified voters for approval or disapproval in conjunction with the regular election to be held on Tuesday, November 5, 2019. Further resolve that the resolution sub replaced upon the voting tabulators or the ballot under the following heading. Shall the Town of Seymour appropriate $5 million for the reconstruction and repair of various town roads and roadside elements and finance the appropriation by issuing the town's bonds, notes, temporary notes, or other obligations in an amount not to exceed $5 million? Answer yes, answer no. Voters approving the resolution will vote yes, and those opposing the resolution will vote no. The polling places used by the town for the election shall be utilized by the town electors for purposes of the referendum vote on the voting tabulators or paper ballots. Absentee ballots will be available from the town clerk's office. Further resolve that the town clerk is authorized to prepare a concise explanatory text of this appropriation and bonding resolution, which has been submitted to a referendum vote on the voting tabulators of the town. Subject to the approval of the town attorney, the Board of Selectmen authorizes the first selectman to prepare and print explanatory materials regarding this resolution. Such explanatory text and explanatory materials to be prepared in accordance with Connecticut General Statute Section 9-369B. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented? Motion by Bob, second by Rob. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Okay, this is gonna be fun, two more times. Item number 11, a resolution recommending an appropriation and bond authorization of $1,400,000 for the communications equipment for the town's emergency services department. Resolve that the Board of Selectmen recommend that the Town of Seymour appropriate $1,400,000 for communications equipment for the town's emergency services departments, including but not limited to the town's fire department, police department, and emergency management department. The appropriation may be expended for installation costs, mainframes, equipment, telecommunications equipment, a computer-aided dispatch system, mobile and portable radios, computers, wires, consoles, professional fees, and for administrative financing and bond issuance costs, interest expense for temporary borrowing, and other costs related to the projects. The appropriation shall include any federal, state, or other grant and aid received for the project. The Board of Selectmen may reduce the scope of the project if funds are insufficient to complete the entire projects, and the entire appropriation may be spent on the reduced project. Further resolve that the Board of Selectmen recommend that the town finance the projects by issuing the town's bonds, notes, temporary notes, or other obligations in an amount not to exceed $1,400,000, or so much thereof as may be necessary after deducting grants to be received by the projects. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented? Motion by Anne Marie, second by Trish. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Item number 12, resolution to call special town meeting and referendum vote. Well, this'll be fun. Whereas the Board of Selectmen has recommended that the Town of Seymour appropriate $1,400,000 for communications equipment for the town's emergency services departments, including but not limited to the town's fire department, police department, and emergency management department, and that the town finance said appropriation by issuing the town's bonds, notes, temporary notes, or other obligations in an amount not to exceed $1,400,000. And whereas, if the above recommendation is approved by the Board of Finance, a special town meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 5, 2019, at 6:30 PM... What did I say?
October 15.
I'm sorry, October 15, 2019, at 6:30 PM to consider the resolution. Be it resolved, that the attached detailed appropriation and bonding resolution for said projects is hereby approved and shall be submitted to a special town meeting to be held on Tuesday, October 15, 2019, in accordance with the attached warning of special town meeting. Further resolve that pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 7-7 as amended and the Town Charter, the Board of Selectmen hereby submits the resolution to a vote upon the voting tabulators or the ballot on Tuesday, November 5, 2019, between the hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM by town electors and qualified voters for approval or disapproval in conjunction with the regular election to be held on Tuesday, November 5, 2019. Further resolve that the resolution shall be placed upon the voting tabulators or the ballot under the following heading. Shall the Town of Seymour appropriate $1,400,000 for the communications equipment for the town's emergency services departments and finance the appropriation by issuing the town's bonds, notes, temporary notes, or other obligations in an amount not to exceed $1,400,000? Answer yes, answer no. Voters approving the resolution will vote yes, and those opposing the resolution will vote no. The polling places used by the town for the election shall be utilized by town electors for purposes of the referendum vote on the voting tabulators or paper ballots. Absentee ballots will be available from the town clerk's office. Further resolve that the town clerk is authorized to prepare a concise explanatory text of this appropriation and bonding resolution, which has been submitted to a referendum vote on the voting tabulators of the town. Subject to the approval of the town attorney, the Board of Selectmen authorizes the first selectman to prepare and print explanatory materials regarding this resolution. Such explanatory text and explanatory materials to be prepared in accordance with Connecticut General Statute Section 9-369B. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented? Motion by Anne Marie, second by Bob. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. All right, one more to go. Item number 13, resolution recommending an appropriation of $15 million... Item number 13, resolution recommending an appropriation of $15 million for a new community center and to finance the appropriation by issuing the town's bonds, notes, or other obligations pursuant to a long-term lease agreement with a third party. Resolution recommending an appropria... Oh, I did not, sorry. Resolve that the Board of Selectmen recommends that the town of Seymour appropriate $15 million for a new community center. The appropriation may be expended for acquisition, demolition, construction, excavation, design, engineering, renovation, installation, and inspection costs, site improvements, equipment, furnishing, and materials, professional fees, and for administrative financing and bond issuance costs, interest expense for temporary borrowing, and other costs related to the project. The appropriation shall include any federal, state, or other grant and aid received for the project. The Board of Selectmen may reduce the scope of the project if funds are insufficient to complete the entire project, and the entire appropriation may be spent on the reduced project. Further resolve that the Board of Selectmen recommends that the town finance the project by issuing the town's bonds, notes, temporary notes, or other obligations or pursuant to a long-term lease agreement with a third party in an amount not to exceed $15 million, or so much thereof as may be necessary after deducting grants to be received by the project. All right, could I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented? Motion by Anne Marie, second by Trish. Just under discussion. So everybody's clear, this is giving us the ability to either, A, go out and borrow the $15 million and build the facility ourselves, or we can enter into a long-term lease agreement with a private developer who may build this on their own piece of land.
Where do the $15 million come from? Is that figure as your...
It's a rough estimate of what we have to date as what cost would be.
Was there a study that needs to work out?
Oh, we had an architect go through and put it through. This... There'll be a full presentation in October at that meeting where we'll have schematic drawings and everything else, so.
Is any of this... So, none of this money would be spent any time before that? It's just all to go towards that town meeting and then voting in November?
No money can be spent until after the approval at the meeting and the vote in November.
Okay, so it's not like any of this money is necessary to fund further investigation of...
No. Actually, no money has been spent to date on this project. Everything has been donated.
Okay, so somebody came up with a $15 million figure for profit that wasn't spent?
We reached out to Claris Construction, who actually does all, builds all of the buildings for basement systems. They have built seven or eight community centers across the state of Connecticut, and he offered to kind of help us, yeah, of just getting us to the point to be able to present it to the people.
Okay.
And, you know, we kind of told him what he wanted. He did some, some just rough number crunching, and I said, "What we need is a high number that we know we would not go above." Because we initially talked about 10 to 12 million is where we thought this would be. He said, "Put 15 million in, you would never go above that." And again, we don't have to spend the full 15 million. Once the plans are approved, they would go out to bid, and then at this point, this board would decide, do we move forward with the project or not? So, we can ultimately kill the project if we wanted to, if it was too expensive. If we didn't think the 15 million gave us what we were hoping for, at that point, we can just say, "No, we don't want to move forward with it."
Okay. And this is very generous, is you can build something, you can retrofit something, it's kind of no real plan.
Well, there's three options that we're weighing, the value of all three. One is to retrofit the current community center. One is to build a brand-new facility on town-owned land, and then one would be to enter into a long-term lease on private land.
Okay.
So...
And that's... That number he came up with covers all those possibilities?
Yes. Yep. Once we have all three fully vetted out, they'll be presented to this board, and this board will actually make the decision as to which direction we go. But that won't be until beginning of October.
And the purpose for doing this right now is just to kind of get it on the horizon and get the voting on, if I may say?
This is to get it on the ballot, so that way the residents can vote. Now, the residents can vote no, and the whole project goes away.
Okay.
So...
Gotcha.
They have the final say, the final decisions to what we do.
Okay.
Okay, I am definitely, would be a proponent of upgrading the community center. I think it's vital. I am not, however, in favor of the process here with voting on this without enough information. So, I'm not going to support it tonight, but I do think it's probably the right idea down the road.
Okay. But again, we're just voting on putting the question on the ballot.
I understand, I understand. But on the other two, we got a lot more information. I was able to really think about those and feel comfortable with them.
Understood.
And I don't feel the same way about this one, so.
Yeah, well, if we don't do it tonight, it doesn't make the ballot.
Understood.
So...
Understood.
Anything else? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five-one-zero. And please note Stefan's...
Okay.
Hmm?
Six of s...
Okay. All right, item number... Where are we? Item number 14. Yeah, you do item number 14, yeah. All right, resolution to call special town meeting and referendum vote. Whereas the Board of Selectmen has recommended that the town of Seymour appropriate $15 million for a new community center and that the town finance said appropriation by issuing the town's bonds, notes, temporary notes, or other obligations or pursuant to a long-term lease agreement with a third party in an amount not to exceed $15 million. And whereas, if the above recommendation is approved by the Board of Finance, a special town meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 15, 2019, at 6:30 p.m. to consider the resolution. Be it resolved that the attached detailed appropriation and bonding resolution for said project is hereby approved and shall be submitted to a special town meeting to be held on Tuesday, October 15, 2019, in accordance with the attached warning of special town meeting. Further resolve that pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section 7-7 as amended and the Town Charter, the Board of Selectmen hereby submits the resolution to a vote upon the voting tabulators or the ballot on Tuesday, November 5, 2019, between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. by town electors and qualified voters for approval or disapproval in conjunction with the regular election to be held on Tuesday, November 5, 2019. Further resolve that the resolution shall be placed upon the voting tabulators or the ballot under the following heading. Shall the town of Seymour appropriate $15 million for a new community center and the finance, and finance the appropriation by issuing the town's bonds, notes, temporary notes, or other obligations or pursuant to a long-term lease agreement with a third party in an amount not to exceed $15 million? Answer yes, answer no. Voters approving the resolution will vote yes, and those opposing the resolution will vote no. The polling place used by the town for the election shall be utilized by the town electors for purposes of the referendum vote on the voting tabulators or paper ballots. Absentee ballots will be available from the town clerk's office. Further resolve that the town clerk is authorized to prepare a concise explanatory text of this appropriation and bonding resolution which has been submitted to a referendum vote on a voting tabulator of the town. Subject to the approval of the town attorney, the Board of Selectmen authorizes the first selectman to prepare and print explanatory materials regarding this resolution. Such explanatory text and explanatory materials to be prepared in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes 9-369B. Could I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented? Motion by Anne Marie, second by Trish. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes six-zero. Thank you very much for your patience in going through all that. Okay, item number 15, discussion, take possible action regarding ordinances. So we have three before us, so we'll go through each one individually. The first one, 6-23 and 6-25 with regards to the fire chiefs. So you see a letter from Clay Jurgens, who is the chair of the Board of Fire Commissioners. So the Board of Fire Commissioners are requesting the following changes to Section 6-21 through 6-25, and they've attached the current ordinance. They would like to add the term deputy chief between chief and assistant chiefs to all appropriate sections. This request is to eliminate problems with chain of command within the fire department. You know, as we all know, they have FD 1234. We know that internally, but for Northwest Public Safety, places like that, when the chief is not in town or is not on duty, there's no clear delineation as to who is actually the next person to call. So they just want to simply add the term deputy chief. So it would be chief, deputy chief, and then two assistant chiefs. So it'd just be some changes to that. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion that the Board of Selectmen forward to the ordinance committee the request from the Board of Fire Commissioners dealing with ordinance Section 6-21 through 6-25. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Rob. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes six-zero. Item 15B, tax relief for retired volunteered first responders. This really doesn't require a vote. This is something that the ordinance committee had already started to discuss, but we asked for some additional information. We wanted the fire commissioners to weigh in a little bit more. We, on the ordinance committee, had all agreed that having the ordinance, or having the ability of retired folks who had served for an extended period of time at the Seymour Fire Department to be able to still continue to receive the ordnance, the abatement made sense, but we wanted some criteria behind it. So we asked the fire commissioners to do that, and as you can see in their letter. The Board of Fire Commissioners are requesting the following requirements for over 65 years of age and 25 years of service pursuant to House Bill Number 5277 for an ordinance within the town of Seymour. Any firefighter that reaches age 65 with a minimum of 25 years of service, not able to actively participate in the day-to-day operations of the department, but is willing to maintain some level of activity within the department for the benefit of the department shall be eligible for the abatement. So again, this is not anything that this board needs to vote on, it's just more informational to the board. The ordinance committee will take this back up at our meeting two weeks from tonight, and then we'll discuss it, and then we'll come back with some actual language to the board. Go ahead.
Does that include if it carries from one fire department to another? Like if they came from a different town, does the years carry? Is there...
Uh... They're right. No, but that's something that we can discuss.
I think you want to make sure that's in the plan if that's part of it.
Yeah, because right now, they're speaking just of men and women who have put in a minimum of 25 years of service in Seymour.
In Seymour, yeah.
But we can certainly discuss that. That's a good point. Any other just comments? Again, this is more informational at the ordinance committee. This is something we had requested probably two months ago, three months ago. So, okay. All right, and then the last one is 15C. The Board of Fire Commissioners are requesting that the Tax Abatement Committee be charged with reviewing the program for updates and changes. You can see they have attached the Section 6-35, which specifically discusses the abatement for firefighters in the town of Seymour. There have been some changes to state statute which have allowed this number to be increased, is my understanding, so they would like this to be reviewed. So again, this is more for informational purposes, and we will have the Tax Abatement Committee do some work and then make recommendations back to the Board of Selectmen, whom in turn will make those recommendations to the ordinance committee and so on. Again, so this is more just informational on that. Any questions with regards to this one?
No.
Sounds good? Okay. All right, so that closes item number 15. We'll go to item number 16, tax refunds and abatements. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the assessors' report dated August 20, 2019, as presented. Motion by Trish, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes six-zero. Item number 17 is transfers. We have no transfers before us. Item number 18 is correspondence. We have a few pieces of correspondence. We have the, excuse me, the check registers. We have a letter from the Connecticut State Library, just letting us know that we did, as always, receive the historic documents preservation grant through the town clerk's office, which we use to essentially continue to update our old records. We're slowly moving them all to digital. We, as you can see, have a letter to Jim Baldwin, who is our building inspector from ISO, with regards to building code effectiveness, grading schedule results. Seymour has had dramatic improvements. As you can see, we are rated a four in the one to two family residential properties and a four for commercial and industrial properties. Scale is from one to 10, one being the best, 10 being the worst. This is a substantial improvement for the town of Seymour. This ISO score helps with your insurance rates. The better the score, the better rating you are, the town is likely to get. And then we have a letter of resignation for John Lovolci, who submitted his resignation to the Seymour Water Pollution Control Authority, and we made an appointment to his replacement, adding Don Sazovich. Okay. So with that, we'll move on to item number 19, public comment. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comments? Okay, hearing no public comment. We'll go to item number 20, Selectmen's public comment, and as always, we'll start with the dashing Stefan Boniac.
I'm all set, thank you, though, for the introduction.
Well, that's the least I can do. We're running out of time, but I can do that, Simon. I want to make full advantage of my next six opportunities to do that.
I'll have more to say next time, just for you.
There'll be something special, though, in that last meeting in November, I want you to know.
Oh, okay.
There'll be a nice little intro, maybe a drum roll. We'll put Bruno on the drums or something. We'll come up with something special.
Oh, man. I hope the dream come true.
Something that'll keep you up at night. Rob?
Nothing except my father finally retired today.
Hey!
Yeah, about time.
Congratulations to Dad.
Yeah, so I'll have some fun enjoying his retirement.
Please pass along our congratulations on his retirement, though. While he's retiring from work, he'll just take on more charity and community services full-time. So, yeah. So that's excellent. Anne Marie?
No, I have nothing.
Wow.
It's been tough.
Stefan, you sent a trend. Rob? Bob?
Nothing.
God, I'm going to go backward. Wow, we're rolling. Leah, this normally doesn't happen, they're just taking it easy on you. Trish? Trish won't let me down.
I don't really have anything to say. I'll say it for a moment.
Wow. My pen just died. Mr. Leclerc, anything we may have missed? Anything you'd like to add? With that, I have...
I have your turn.
Well, motion by Anne Marie, second by Trish. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes six-zero. Mark the meeting closed at 7:50 p.m. Thank you very much.
Were you supposed to take a picture of us?
Well, yeah. I mean, we know where he is. Does it... It doesn't change this happening. But, Leah, you're filling in for him. Why don't you just stand in and we'll be picking on it, help him?